We'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of April 16th to order. And we'll go ahead and have Commissioner Gary Watts, Vice Chair Gary Watts.
Please stand if you're able and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance on my lead. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Chair Turley Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Hagel.
Here.
Commissioner Solis is currently absent. Commissioner Watts.
Here.
And Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Okay, great. And do we have any public comments on non-agendized items?
We do not.
Okay. And I know that, I'm going to mention this right now, I've, we talked about maybe having it taped so that I don't have to read this every time. Are we going to do that, like they do in city council meetings? Is that possible? Okay. I know. I just, was just thought about it, so I thought I'd mention it. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and read the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right, on the consent calendar, number one is to approve action minutes of April 2nd, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gary Watts and a second by Watson.
There he is.
Mark. Wow, that is a little confusing. Okay. My brother Watson, my other brother Watson. Okay, here we go. Public hearing.
I've got a vote.
Oh, I need a vote. Hang, I did this last time too. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right. Okay, the fun's over. Here we go. Public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right, item number two, long-range planning project number LR25-0068, amending Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. Mark, staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you mentioned, this is LR250068, an amendment to Title 17, an ADU ordinance. Just give it a quick second, get my presentation up. There we go. Okay. So I'll just get into a little bit of terminology refresher here. I'm going to be using a lot of acronyms, please forgive me, but just go for a little refresher for everyone. We're on the same page here. An accessory dwelling unit is an ADU. It can be a detached, separate structure greater than or equal to 1,200 square feet, or it can be an attached expansion or addition to the existing home. Also, a junior accessory dwelling unit, or JADU, is a conversion of existing space, and it is generally greater than or equal to, or I'm sorry, less than or equal to 500 square feet. A few more for you. Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, Government Code Section, GCS, so on, so forth. And then just to clarify here for our ADU limits, for our single-family zoning, these standards did apply and they will remain. There's a limit of two ADUs for single-family zoning, one detached or attached ADU, and one JADU. Got a little visual representation there for you. And a little bit more background, the ADU programs' mild success continues to diversify and increase housing stock throughout the city. The state continues to streamline regulations to further encourage ADU development, and then staff is proposing an ordinance to amend the municipal code to comply with state law. The proposed ordinance replaces Chapter 17.23 accessory dwelling units in its entirety, and the proposed changes are broken down by section. Just so you are aware, the main driver here is all these ADU laws that the state's been passing over time have kind of made the government code sections a little bloated, so they ended up doing a renumbering of them this past year. So the big changes here, all the red ink on the Red Line version, is from changing those government code sections to the new references. So for Section 1723.010, our purpose and applicability, all we're going to do here is correct some references to government code sections. No changes in purpose or anything to that effect. Jumping into definitions, Section 1723.020, we're going to, again, correct some references to go to multiple government code sections, and then we're going to update the definition of junior accessory dwelling unit to include requirements for cooking facilities such as stove top, oven, refrigerator, sink. And also, it does require food preparation and storage areas be adequate, so counter space and food storage areas. And then general requirements for building permit-only ADUs and JADUs, Section 1723.030, we're going to correct references to multiple government code sections. We're going to make a few various typographical and format corrections, and then we're going to codify existing addressing requirements. These are already in the code, we're just putting them in here, again, just to make sure they're not missed, and it's a health and life safety item for us. The addressing requirements would be the, obviously, the main one would be 123 Main Street, Unit 1, and then an ADU, or a second ADU would be Unit 2, Unit 3. And then continuing in the same section, we're going to require that JADUs that do not have a restroom must maintain internal access to the primary residence for such facilities. And then another state requirement here, we're going to reduce the minimum size of a JADU from 220 to 150 square feet. And then we're going to clarify covenant restrictions must include provisions prohibiting separate sale of the ADU or JADU, and then requiring the JADU to conform to size limitations. We don't need these things creeping out over time, getting bigger. Sticking with the same section here, we're going to implement the state mandated height limits. Forgive me, I will trip over my tongue a few times here. So for a detached ADU, on a single, in single-family zoning, it would be 16-feet height limit, which is standard for all of our accessory structures across the city. On a single, on a lot with a single-family dwelling, or a single-story multifamily, so a single-story apartment complex, within half-mile from a major transit stop are allowed 18-feet. An additional 2-feet, so 20-feet, is allowed to match the existing roof's pitch, and 18-feet on a lot with an existing or proposed multi-story, multifamily development. An attached ADU can be up to 25-feet, or height limit of the zone, whichever is lower. And we cannot prohibit two-story ADUs if compliant. So if an applicant can make a 16-foot ADU, two stories, and they can meet building code, we cannot deny it. Then our last one for Section 030, it would increase the ADUs allowed for multi-story, multifamily development to eight. Presently, the limit is two. These would be ADUs only, no JADUs, and the ADUs cannot exceed the number of existing or proposed residential units. So you couldn't have a six-unit apartment complex come in and propose eight ADUs with it. So it would have to be on par with that. Jumping into our requirements and application procedures for ministerial ADUs, Section 1723.040, again, we're going to correct some references to government code sections, and we're going to codify the existing addressing requirements we went over previously, and then we're going to make some various typographical and format corrections. Then for our standards for ministerial ADUs, we're going to, again, correct some references to government code sections, and then we're going to specify when a six-foot separation is applicable. The city, a couple years ago, we passed a separation requirement from an ADU to the primary residence of six-feet. Staff felt it important for the operation of the residence to have access, emergency egress, things of that nature. We were told by HCD in their review of our ordinance that this may run afoul of ADU law, so we amended the ordinance to include essentially an escape hatch. So this six-foot separation is required unless its enforcement would preclude deconstruction of an ADU. So we still have it, but unfortunately had to give a little bit of a get-out-of-jail-free card for it. And then we're going to specify the sprinkler requirements on an ADU cannot trigger sprinklers in an existing residence. And then, Section 1723.050 continued, we're going to amend the ADU size accommodation limits. The city is limited in the standards we can enforce for ADUs. However, these standards, as limited as they are, they go out the window if they preclude the construction of an 850-square-foot ADU, either studio or one-bedroom. The standard used to be 800 square feet, it is now 850. Or a 1,000-square-foot ADU if it has more than one bedroom. So if our standards would preclude this construction, our standards go away and state law takes over. This is up to the applicant to prove that the application of our code would prohibit this construction. It's not just a get-out-of-jail-free card for an applicant to put an ADU where they so choose. They would have to show and prove to planning staff that our app, our, our standards would prohibit their development. And then last one for Section 050, and then we're going to require ADUs to be designed to match the existing residence in materials and color, or they use a city permit-ready ADU design. This is our two-bedroom, one-bath, I believe it's around 700 square-feet unit, but we have like a 495 unit, or 495 square-foot up to 1,192 square-foot unit, so any of those would be applicable as well. That way, we can get some quality products. And then lastly, Section 1723.060, our fees in utility connections, we're going to correct some references to government code sections, and then make various typographical and formatting corrections. That's it for this section. And just so everyone is aware, Temecula is required per Planning and Zoning Code subsection 66326A to submit all ADU ordinances to HCD for review. So if adopted and approved by city council, this will be sent to HCD for their review. They are several years behind, so keep that in mind. Where we've been, this item was taken to the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee on March 19th with Commissioners Hagel and Watson, and the City Council General Plan Update Subcommittee on March 27th with Mayor Calvis and Council Member Ron. All parties were supportive of the project moving forward. And we are before you today at the Planning Commission, and then on May 13th, we plan to go before the city council. For secret determination, staff has determined that this ordinance is statutorily exempt from the requirement of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15282H. And then staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed resolution. And that completes my presentation, and I'm available for all of your questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that presentation. And I'll start on this end. Bob, any questions for staff?
Yes. Could you go back to slide with the heights, the building heights?
Yes, sir.
So, do you have any idea why you can go from 16 to 18-feet if you're within a half-mile of a transit stop? What's the logic there?
I don't know the logic, but I know that's what state law says.
Good answer.
Matt, did you have something to add?
We had the same question. Yeah.
Gary.
First of all, Mark, outstanding presentation. I loved the way you presented it. You must be learning a lot about law, watching all, reading all these, these ordinances that the state continues to pass. Just curious, besides the transit stop at the mall, I'm sure that would probably be considered a major transit stop. Do we have any other in the city that you're aware of?
No, sir, not under the current definition.
So a section would only apply within a half-a-mile of that particular?
Correct.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark?
Only briefly, I'll echo Commissioner Watts's sentiment, his comments on your presentation. Excellent. And I had the benefit of seeing it twice. It was just as good the second time around, so thank you.
My apologies.
Not at all. Hey, so I wanted to ask you then, so I guess the intended purpose of this is to get us in line with what Sacramento is sending down from the north, right? How closely then does this mirror that? Are there any exceptions or anywhere that we're, we have any vulnerabilities left over, or are we in line?
We are in line. We have two items in here. Everything is before you, and all the changes proposed in the documents before you are reflections of state law and us staying compliant with this. The only two items that are outside of this are the six-foot separation that I mentioned. That was something staff felt was a life safety requirement, and we kind of gave them that a wiggle room to not apply it if need be. And then also the addressing requirement. In the agenda packet you have, you'll see our comment letter from HCD when they reviewed our prior ADU ordinance from, I believe, 2022. They did not care for our addressing resolution. Staff feels that this is a life safety matter. If someone is having an emergency or medical, something going on at their residence and the red lights show up, they need to know where they're going very promptly, and I don't think they want to be guessing what is Unit 1, what is Unit 2, where's Grandma. So we feel this needs to be in place, and that's why staff's including it.
I was going to ask that question as a sort of a clarification. So the primary residence on the lot will have a Unit 1. Does that, is that also sort of an indicator that there is a Unit 2?
Yes.
Keep looking?
Yes.
Thanks for those answers.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mark? So I don't, I had asked some questions of Mark because this eight detached ADUs, all of a sudden there's eight instead of two. It's like, really? I know, this isn't discussion time. But that was, that was kind of a shocker for me, but I know, thank you for the presentation, and, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Do we have any public comments?
We have no, received no requests to speak.
No requests to speak. Okay, then, I didn't open the public hearing because we don't have an applicant, or, so?
We can just let the record reflect that there was no one here, so.
There's no one here.
Open and close.
There's no one here. Okay. So, any other discussions before we vote on this? Anybody have any other, anything else they want to say? No?
I could go on for hours about the state jamming things down the locals jurisdictions' fault, but, but I won't. So, we're doing what we have to do. We've got a good presentation done. The municipal code needs to be brought into compliance with state law, so therefore we'll make the motion that we adopt.
Before you make a motion, let's make sure that there isn't any other discussion. Any other discussion? The one thing I did want to say is, the one good thing is that there's no short-term rental. That was a highlight for me when I read through that. No?
Somebody might get an idea.
Okay, anyway. All right, do we have a motion?
So, yeah, I'll continue that we adopt the motion as proposed by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gary and a second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we will go to item number three, planning application numbers PA23-0280, a zoning amendment application to change the zoning from highway tourist to planned development overlay, PDO 16. PA23-0204, a tentative parcel map to create two parcels from one existing parcel. PA23-0197, a development plan application to allow for the construction of two structures totaling approximately 4,546 square feet. PA23-0198, a conditional use permit to allow car wash. And PA24-0348, a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant drive-through. Eric?
Before he begins, I see we have a couple new members in the audience, and I'd just like to ask that if they do want to speak on this item, there are request-to-speak forms in the lobby that should be completed and handed in to me if you would please.
Thank you. Okay, Eric?
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number three is the Bedford Court Development Project, and it consists of all of the applications that you just referenced. I'll just briefly go through them. Again, we have a zoning amendment application to change the zoning from highway tourist to planned development overlay 16. There's also tentative parcel map to create two parcels from one existing parcel, and a development plan to create two structures totaling a little over 4,500 square feet. And finally, but not least, we have two conditional use permits, one to allow for the car wash and one to allow for the drive-through at the coffee shop. Project's generally located at the end of Bedford Court. It's in the red area you see here below. It's bordered by I-15, some existing residential. We have an existing gas station and existing commercial uses as well. Now we'll get into each of those applications. The first is the zone change slash planned development overlay. As I mentioned, this is going to change the zoning from highway tourist to PDO 16. And what a PDO does is it allows for a project to basically have its own development standards. And one that I really like to point out here is the separation of the car wash from the residentially-zoned property. The development code talks about needing to have a 200-foot separation. If approved, this PDO will change that to be 75-feet. There's also other changes as well. I've put together this table here that you can see the difference between what's currently allowed under the highway tourist zoning, and then what will be permitted if the PDO is approved. And there's some interesting ones in here, like take a look at the maximum building height. Right now, if somebody went in there and built under the highway tourist zone, they could have a 75-foot tall building. The PDO is bringing that down to 30-feet. You take a look at the percentage of lot coverage, right now it's 30%. The PDO is proposing 10%. The last one there, landscape coverage, 20% per the current zoning, and the planned development overlay is going to go for 25%. Take a look at the tentative parcel map. As I mentioned, it's going to split one lot into two lots, and parcel one will be adjacent to I-15, and house the car, house the car wash, and it's also adjacent to the residence. Parcel two is also adjacent to the residence, and it's going to house the gas station. Let's take a look at what that map looks like. Here's a copy of the map. You see parcel one right here is, was adjacent to I-15. We have parcel two right next door. That's what's going to house the Dutch Brothers Coffee Shop. For development plan, looking at the coffee shop side of things, that structure totals approximately 950 square feet. It's not a typical coffee shop like a Starbucks where there's the whole inside seating area and whatnot, where you can hang out or do whatever you need to do. This has no indoor seating. It's purely designed for either walk-up or drive-through. With that drive-through, orders are taken from an employee in the drive-through line, kind of which you've probably seen it, In-N-Out, it's that kind of thing. If there's inclemental weather, or they don't happen to have enough on staff that day, you can have your order taken at the pickup window. So it's pretty much just a get-in, get-out. They don't have the speakers that we're typically used to seeing with drive-throughs. I have their hours of operation here, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and then again, the drive-through portion of this requires the CUP per our, per our code. From the car wash, that structure, little over 3,500 square feet. Its queuing lines can accommodate about 19 vehicles, and the vehicles enter the car wash tunnel from the south and will exit towards the north, and we'll explain why that's important here in just, just a little bit. I have their hours of operation. They have 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and a car wash does require a conditional use permit. Take a look here at the site plan, and what we'll kind of do is walk through how the site plan works. So you can see Bedford Court labeled there. You enter in the site from right here, and then if you wanted to go to the car wash, you would turn to the right, and then the red outlined area is the car wash. Here's where you enter the queue, and you go all the way through the line, and towards the end there, you pick whichever service you want and pay. And then you enter the tunnel from right here, and you exit here. And the reason it's important is the exiting where all the blowers are, that's as far away from the residences as we could get it. Then once you exit the tunnel, you can either come to one of the drying areas, which is here in the red spot, red area, or you can just leave. For the coffee shop, which is located here, closer to the gas station, you enter that queue right here, and then it directly takes you out back onto Bedford Court, right up From landscaping for the project, the project is going to dedicate 37% of the site to the landscaping, and that's higher than what the development code requires, and that's even higher than what their proposed PDO requires. I just listed some of the plantings that they have here, but let's take a look at how this all kind of works together. We can see, again, you can see Bedford Court labeled. You can see Building 1, Building 2, Building 1 being the car wash, Building 2 is the coffee shop, and from staff's perspective, we feel that this landscaping plan is, is over the, over the requirements, and it has a nice lush, lush look to it. Helps soften the uses in the buildings and whatnot. Architecturally, the project is proposing a green architectural style. That's often includes rustic materials and elements. I just listed a few of them here, and then we'll go through these, these elevations. So here we have the, the quick quack. We have the south elevation. This is where the cars would enter in, and then we have the north elevation. That's where they'll exit. You see different materials. They have, they have stone, they have wood, they have the metal. Look at the side elevations here. We have the east elevation, west elevation. Then we'll move on to the Dutch Brothers, the north and south elevations. Here we've got stonework, we've got metal on the canopy there, we've got wood siding. East elevation, west elevation. And for this one, we felt, now that we've seen the elevations with the proposal, we thought it'd be good to show what the project originally came in with, and then what we've ended up with tonight. We think it's a really nice improvement. We just wanted you guys to kind of see that kind of before and after. I just have a couple of elevations. We have the original here for the Dutch Brothers. You can see, we've got, looks like a lot of cinder block and whatnot, stucco. And then revised, is which I have just previously showed you, we've got the nicer materials, kind of nicer, softer design. This is just another view of it. This is the, the entrance, car wash entrance. You see the original, more of that cinder block, and then we have the revised materials there on the bottom. And then kind of the same thing here for the Dutch Brothers, as you can see. So we thought it was important to show that, to show how the applicants really worked with us to bring out what we thought was a good-looking project. And you have the Gateway Temecula Project on the other side, Temecula Parkway, which has kind of a similar look and feel to it, and that's been pretty well-received, so we hope that this will be as well. And with the car wash and the drive-through next to residential, obviously noise is a concern. We have the blowers, and you have the drive-throughs and whatnot. So this right here is a table taken directly out of the noise study, out of the MND. And I can just briefly walk you through. You had the receptors there. They looked at four different areas. And that first column, the existing ambient noise level, that's what's out there right now. If you were to go there right now, you'd pretty much just hear the freeway is pretty much what it is. Then you have the project, if it was there by itself, and you can see we have 68, 66, 52, and 59 for the decibels, and the maximum is 70, by the way. Now, you combine those two together, the existing and the project, the ambient and the project, and then you have these different noise levels here, the 70, 69, 61, and 66, kind of there in the middle. Now, receptors one and two, those are closer to the commercial. They're facing, I'll show this on the map in just a moment. They're facing where the commercial is, and that's where all the blowers would be pointing towards. Three and four are towards the residential. So let's take a look at where these are right now. So you can see one and two, that's the existing commercial, and that's closest to the exit of the car wash where all the blowers are. And then you have number three and number four, that's the residential down there. So it's quite a difference. It's also important to note that the applicant conducted community outreach meetings. They held two meetings back in October of last year. They were notice meetings to all the residents there and the surrounding community. Staff was in attendance, but neither of these meetings were attended by members of the public. From an environmental perspective, as I just mentioned a little bit ago, an MND was prepared, the final MND, and the MND identified no areas where impacts were considered significant or unavoidable. There were a few mitigation measures, a couple dealing with bio, cultural, travel resources, but nothing associated with noise. As far as staff's recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend city council approval of the project based on the acquired findings and recommend it. conditions of approval, and recommend adoption of the mitigated, excuse me, mitigated negative declaration and its associated mitigation measures. It has to go to city council because of the PDO. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. The applicant's whole team is here. If you have questions for them, we also have representatives from De novo. That's the firm that did the MND and all the different studies. If you have real technical questions, they'd be the ones to ask for that.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. I'm going to start on this end. Mark, you have questions of staff?
Thank you. Just a few. I prepared a few questions that I wanted to run by staff, and I guess we can come to applicant questions later. Let's see. You know, one of my lead-off questions was going to be, you know, where it talks about how the project is compatible with the nature, condition, and development of adjacent uses. I had a little bit of a concern, admittedly, about the proximity of the bounding residential homes, but again, you said there were two noticed meetings, and they were not attended at all.
They were not attended at all by any members of the public.
Did we receive any written communication?
We did not.
We did not?
Uh-uh. And we double-checked the mailings to make sure that it was mailed all properly, and it
Sure.
They were sent to their addresses.
I wanted to clarify something in, let's see, section two, paragraph B. The drive-through will be located adjacent to Bedford Court. This one confused me a little bit because it looks like the stacking lanes for Dutch Brothers could be more aptly described as being residential-adjacent rather than Bedford Court adjacement, adjacent rather. My concern here is the potential for vehicular and amplified music noise adjacent to those homes. Do you have any thoughts on that?
When I put that into the staff report, I was, in my mind, I was kind of relating it more to the car wash. This was more adjacent to Bedford Court than the car wash, but you are correct, and as I've shown during the presentation, the drive-through is adjacent also to the gas station and the residential as well as Bedford Court.
Okay. One, I guess, I don't know if it's a mitigating measure, but you say that it's the applicant's policy or Dutch Brothers' policy that they have walk-up, like you said, compared to In-N-Out. So people, I would assume, if they're cranking their stereos, those employees are probably, will ask people to turn that down?
Well, for something like that, I would ask the applicant.
I'll ask the applicant.
Yeah, that's
Sorry, I'm throwing it in there. I think I understand this. De novo, a planning group and city staff concluded that the project could have a less, could have a significant impact on the environment, but that mitigation measures could be implemented to reduce the impact to a less than significant level. Does that have anything to do with the burrowing owl? I think I saw something about that in De novo.
No, the burrowing owl is in there as an abundance of caution because so many parcels in the city have potential for it, and pretty much every single development plan has to at the very least do a pre-construction burrowing owl survey. This one's no different. That's why it's in there, because it's so prolific in the area.
And yet I've never seen one.
We haven't either.
Yeah, right. Another thing, when we talk about the, in the draft COA, we talk about the hours of construction, and I'm seeing 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Monday through Saturday. And I'm, my reference, yours will be superior to mine, I'm sure, but I thought I saw in the Temecula Municipal Code, Chapter 9.20, that construction has to be limited to 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday. Am I misreading that?
Yeah, so the building safety could probably fill in a little bit better than I could, but essentially, the construction hours are from 6:00 a.m. to 7:30, if I recall. And anything after that, there's allowances in the code, and specifically calls out that residents can work on their private home outside of those hours, and also on Sundays and national holidays. I think building and safety could probably give you better information on that.
You can see the concern, if it's worded right.
Yeah, I mean, basically, those hours of construction are pertaining to licensed contractors working on projects. Those extended hours are specifically for homeowners. I mean, they could theoretically work probably up to the 10 o'clock hour when, you know, all the noise limitations kick in in most residential areas. So that's the differentiation there.
Okay, so then, we would then, for this construction, see a knockoff. At least, my concern would be Saturday at 6:30 to 18:30.
Yeah, I mean, we don't differentiate Monday, Monday through Saturday on our construction hours.
Thank you. Let's see. I saw what, I just couldn't reconcile. I saw in one of the renderings, and then in a detail, the roof structure. In a rendering, it appears radius. In one of the drawing, in one of the drawings, it shows it as a flat roof. Are there differences, or which is it?
No, the photo sim did show a little bit of that radius, but the actual technical plan here, it's flat. It will be flat when constructed.
It's flat. The menu boards that they're using, are they changeable content, changeable copy, digital?
They're digital, sir.
They're digital. Let's see. In the noise impact study, I saw the comment in Section 6.3, Stationary Noise Modeling, quote, "All other noise-producing equipment, for example, compressors and pumps, will be housed within mechanical equipment rooms." And so I guess my question there was, I see the vacuum producer is located outside in an enclosure, which I guess isn't technically a mechanical equipment room, is it?
No, that's an enclosure for the vacuum, and the plans there do show that there's a roof on it. You will see along the upper portion of that enclosure, it has to have a mesh screening on it. And the reason that has to be meshed right there is it has to allow airflow in, otherwise the vacuum unit will overheat and shut down. Needs to have, it's an airflow issue. But it is, it does have a roof on it, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is it possible to bring up, just because it's got the best contrast, that landscape plan?
I got it right here, yes, sir. They'll put it up, there you go.
Right. So at that, at the location of the, perhaps you could mouse over, but the location of the vacuum producer, again, I know, I'm not sure what the horsepower is of this, whether it's a 40 horsepower or something along those lines, but again, I'm concerned about the proximity, yes, of where you're highlighting that. I realize it has a lid on it, but the proximity of that to the home versus the practicality of putting it in the mechanical equipment room? Do we know what the thinking was there?
Yeah, the practicality of putting it in the equipment room, I'd have to defer to the applicant on that one. I can't say from our perspective, the project, the project was measured and analyzed with everything running full blast, and it still didn't meet, it still did not exceed the noise requirement. As far as moving that to an equipment room, again, I'd ask the applicant to come up and talk about that.
Okay. I've, I'm not terribly familiar with quick quack's operation, but I assume they're like a lot of express car washes, that they have, you know, towel dispensers and towel receptacles. Does this, will this operation be any different?
No, they're not going to have those. They're just going to have standard vacuum pumps at each stall. They don't have a towel dispenser.
Okay. No, none of the little free microfiber towels?
No, again, I'd bring them up, but what they've indicated to us is that, no, they don't have that.
One thing from the drawings, and I should have made a note of the drawing reference, but it was, it was like, I think it was a section view of the vacuum canopy that showed something called a cue ball. Any way we could
Yeah, those, they indicated that those were the trash cans at the end of the vacuum areas. We could bring them up, and they could elaborate more on that, but that was the answer that they provided in looking at those.
Okay. I'll ask the applicant about that, because I thought I saw a trash receptacle in line with the stanchion for the vacuum, and the cue ball was something separate. But I'll ask, we'll ask the applicant about that.
Okay.
Applicant. In its statement of operations, I read that Dutch Brothers indicates typical hours of operation as being between 5:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. seven days a week. I wonder, do you know, or should I aim this at the applicant to confirm the precise hours of operation for this specific site?
They confirm the hours that you just referenced. Those will be the hours for this site that they're proposing.
Very good. Okay. Now to the other use, over back to Building One for operating hours. It seems to me that I read that quick quack's indicating 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. seven days I guess I have a tough spot with 9:00 p.m. That seems awfully late for residential-adjacent, especially when we talk about the PDO reduction in separation from 275 feet. To whom should I address that concern?
You'd probably want to talk to the applicant about that.
All right, very fair, very fair. Let's see. I'll ask the applicant this one, too. Okay. Are the EV stalls, it's probably right there in front of me, Mr. Jones, but are they capable, ready, or installed?
They're capable, sir.
They're capable. None of them are installed?
No. Building and safety could answer more about that, but they're only required to have them ready to go, capable.
And then, I wanted to ask you, too, because this struck me as peculiar, that if it's the case, are vacuum stalls allowed to be counted against the project's parking stall requirement by code?
The way our code is written is it doesn't give any distinction between a regular parking stall and a vacuum stall, so we don't take that into account. The only thing the code lets us do is count, excuse me, park a car wash at two and a half spaces per however many vehicles the tunnel can accommodate, and this one can accommodate about five vehicles.
Thank you. This is probably, this is a technical question about the blowers. I'll reserve that for the applicant. Here's one. It seemed like a relatively high parking requirement for a coffee shop with only patio seating. I didn't scale the drawing, and I'm, but I'm wondering, do we, do we know the seating capacity of the patio?
The seating capacities is not something that we, that we look at in this particular type of a project. That's, I hate to kick the can again, but that's kind of more of a building and safety thing. But as far as the parking is concerned, planning does look at that, and the way that we park, this is considered fast food, the way we park these is one per 75 square feet. With this building only, this building being 950 square feet, that's where we get the parking number from. So it doesn't matter that there's no seating or not or whatnot, it's how big is the building, and that
The floor area.
That's what gives you your parking number.
Very good. I think you answered that about walk-up is possible. Are both of the driveways, if we're looking at Bedford Court or the ingress egress, are both of those allowed by right? Or was any variance?
They're both allowed. There's no variances, there's no exceptions. This is what they proposed. It met the requirements from Public Works for driveways and access and whatnot, so it was allowed to go through to tonight.
Very good. Let's see. I had a question about the applicant's schedule for construction, but I guess I'll bring that up with the applicant. Let's see. Has the applicant indicated, I know we have a satisfaction of public artwork requirement that was mentioned, has the applicant, do we know how they're going to satisfy their public artwork obligation?
I don't know exactly how they're going to do it, but what is typical, what we've seen, is they always just pretty much pay the in-luffy.
The I.
Which you can ask, yeah, you could refer that to them.
Okay. This may be premature as well, but it's a concern, or a question. Does the applicant have a photometric plan yet?
They're working on one. The project is conditioned, I think it's condition number 49, I think it is, to have one prior to issuance of building permits. We've kind of seen it preliminarily where it's at, and just, I know there's concern with the residence. If you look down in that portion of that photometric plan, everything's well below one-foot candle. That'll all be finalized out when the building plans come in.
Thank you. I had another question. It said, I think, in the resolution that on paragraph 41, the landscaping and irrigation plans shall provide a minimum five-foot wide planter to be installed at the perimeter of all parking areas. Curbs, walkways, et cetera, are not to infringe on this area. But am I, am I misreading it, where it seems like some curbs do tend to do that by the path of travel and?
Sure, yeah. So the way the PDO is written is that areas that are under the vacuum canopy, or areas that are part of the ADA path of travel, those are exempt from that. So there's a couple areas that you would see seem to contradict just at a quick look at it, but when you look at what the PDO requires, it's in conformance.
All right, I think that's all I've got. Thank you so much for entertaining my questions.
Okay, thank you. Gary?
Yes, my big concern in this proposal was the noise component of both the proposed uses. I must say that I talked to you earlier, Eric, to voice my concerns, and you reassured me through our conversations that all my concerns regarding the noise are taken care of and within the acceptable environmental limits. So thank you for doing that, saved me some time, and certainly kept me on the right track on that. So other than that, everything has been explained very, very well, and thanks again for the information on the noise.
Certainly.
Once again, the mitigated NDC looks pretty easy compared, I mean, the conditions, I doubt if they produce anything, but maybe. I mean, the cultural resources are always a possibility, but I'd be surprised.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bob?
There's only two questions left. The waste management area, I noticed that there is, there will be an agreement between the two businesses related to parking. Is the waste management area for both businesses, and would that be a part of that agreement?
Yeah, it's for both. It's for both of the uses. There'll be, this part will be, will be conditioned to have reciprocal access agreement and parking agreement, and that usually all gets rolled up into all those types of things.
Okay, good, because there is no Property Owners Association, I would
No.
I assume, no, okay. Is there, there are other businesses in this little business village? How many other businesses are there?
There are four. There's Carl's Jr., there's an Italian restaurant, there is, I think, a pizza place.
Pizza place.
There's an Asian restaurant. I think that's it.
Okay. Is there a Property Owners Association among that group, do you know?
That I don't know, sir.
Okay. Okeydoke, that's it.
Okay, I just have a couple. Can you go back, Eric, to the, I think it was the original slide of the, how the cars go in and out?
This one?
Yeah. So, so what is the distance? I can't really, I can't tell. Like, from, from the blue line, which is the residence, to where the actual, the actual project starts? How many feet?
You mean to the, it's like the corner right here of the car wash?
Yeah.
That's 75 feet.
So that's 75 feet there?
Yes.
So then, oh, to where it actually starts?
You mean down here by the, hang on, I'm highlighting it.
Do you have like a little, your little cursor thing?
I'm trying to highlight it right now.
Oh, okay.
You mean like this area right here?
Yeah, so the distance from the, from that wall, I went out there today, from that wall to there, and then also over to where the cars come in, to Dutch Brothers.
Oh, sorry. I was just trying to
Did I do that?
No, I didn't. I apologize. I was trying to zoom in so I could get that distance. It looks like it's 30 feet, actually, is what it looks like. Looks like it's 30 feet, sorry. There you go.
Looks like it's what?
30 feet.
30 feet. Okay, so the 75 feet that we're counting is from where the actual car wash is?
The 75 feet is from the blue line there, basically, and to that tip of the car wash structure.
Which is where? Can you highlight that?
I'll highlight it right now.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Right there.
And then for Dutch Brothers, can you do the same thing?
Yeah, I gotta hop out of it real quick.
So from the blue line to that yellow, it's 75 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And let me, it's gonna come off really quick. Let me get you that distance. It's a little tough to read, to be honest with you, how far that is, but it is farther than 75 feet, because it does the, let me back out here so you can take a look at this. It's farther than 75 feet, just a little bit, because the Dutch Brothers, you can see when you look at the corner of the Dutch Brothers, which I'll highlight right now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just a little bit beyond the car wash by a little bit.
And can you show me again the cars coming in and out more exactly? Especially the, I saw the car wash one, but I need to see again with the Dutch Brothers.
Okay. Let me just get through my. So here's where you enter.
Okay.
There's where you enter the queue. And there's where you exit the queue.
Okay, and so if somebody is coming in to the project, they're coming along that red line? No?
That, no, that red line is the designation between the two parcels.
So they have to come all the way around?
I'll draw it. One second.
To go to Dutch? No?
I'll show you.
Okay, I'm gonna wait and find out. This'll be so fun. Okay.
So let's see if my line's coming in. Eric, can you kind of see that? It starts a little squibbly.
The red line?
The red line is true, yeah. That's how you get in, that's how you get in there.
Okay, okay. All right. So, that was my question, the distance. So there, yeah, so it's, okay. Yeah, I had the same concern as Mark on being so close to the residence and the residential area. So let me, okay, that answered that question. Did you have material boards on, are they around? Because you know I always want those.
Got it right here for you.
Okay, perfect. So I appreciated the before and after. I think that was definitely improvement on that. So really, I liked that you showed us what that was. Can you show me, after seeing the boards, can you show me on the Quick Quack, do you have like where all that yellow is? Is it just on that front, south elevation, north elevation?
Yeah, it's on that south and north elevation. Here's the other, here's the siding. You can see that it's not on any of the siding. It's just.
Just on that, okay.
Entrance and exit.
Yeah, because I've noticed other ones are like, woo, Quick Quack, right? Okay, I think those are my questions. Any other questions from staff before we open the public hearing? Nope? Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and we're gonna go ahead and bring up the applicants first, and we'll have our applicant for both. Hey, how are you?
You look familiar.
Yeah, you do too.
It's always a little freaky for me to be on the side of the dais. I'm not used to it. But anyway, Madam Chair, good evening, commission, staff. Eric, I think you did a wonderful job of not only presenting the project, but, you know, it's a delicate balance, as we all know, between protecting the rights of the citizens and the city, and at least trying, as you did, to do what the developer needs to have done in a timely fashion. So I really commend you for doing that, and it worked. Took a long time, because development takes a long time. But it worked, so not just Eric, but Stuart, the rest of the planning staff, really have been very cooperative throughout the process. So there's not much I can say at this point. I know you have some questions that we'll be happy to answer. Our consultant team is here. We have representative from Quick Quack and a representative from Dutch Brothers as well. I've talked to the applicant who will be up here in a minute, Mark Cooper from Catalyst Commercial Group, and we agree with and accept the conditions, so no problem with that. And with that, I'll introduce Mark Cooper.
Why don't you introduce yourself first, because Mark maybe doesn't know you.
I'm representing the developer today. Of course, I have a long history here in this building, but that's not relevant to this.
I'm Mark Watson. What's your name?
My name's Jeff Comocero. Nice to meet you.
I'm very pleased to meet you.
Pleasure, and I have to tell you, your questions were not only on point, but very thorough. And that's good for everybody, you know. I've been with development teams that don't always like to hear some of that, but it helps the process along, and it's great. So good job on that, everybody. And Mark? I know Mark Cooper for many years. He does a lot of infill-type development in neighborhoods. He's very accustomed to doing that. And generally speaking, he's always looking, look, developers want to make money, so I'm not sugarcoating that, but to do it with the community in mind and know that projects need to enhance the city and the community, that's Mark. So I'll let him talk.
Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Good evening. Mark Cooper, the applicant. Eric, thank you very much. Great presentation, great job. I take back most of those disparaging things I said two years ago. Mr. Watson, I always tell people to, the humble Jeff Comocero, if you don't know how to spell that last name, it's just outside the door here.
Yeah, I'll give it a look. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Mark Cooper, the applicant, do not get the wrong idea from this very cool blazer. Most of your questions, I'm gonna be going like this or that. In fact, I'm gonna have the Quick Quack rep come up, because I think that's where most of these are gonna go, and between he, that's Don Shively, and Tyler, I don't remember your last name, I'm sorry. Tyler drove over from Phoenix today, is with MD Acoustics, who we've been doing business with for years, and they are intricately involved in the car wash business and particularly with Quick Quack. So Catalyst Commercial Group, I just want to introduce us. We're a local down the road in Urieta with an office in Redlands. Kind of a boutique developer. We do a lot of small projects like this. We, you're not gonna get a grocery store or a mall on this little property, but it is, this is a nice little infill project with two, what we consider to be strong national credit tenants. As far as the concerns that you've brought up with the proximity to the residential, we did our noise study before we even talked really to anyone about this. We knew Quick Quack was interested. And so we knew before day one what the noise study said, and as Eric has said, and as Tyler will attest to, and Don will talk about on Quick Quack's behalf, it's below all of the thresholds and no impact on the residences. The second thing, we did have two public outreach evenings, and not only, and we had them at the Temecula Pizza Place. There was a question on, and as Eric said, nobody showed up. I don't believe we had comments. But we got to sit there and eat pizza for two nights in a row, so. There was a question, Commissioner Hagel maybe, on the, on a association. The Domigoni family owns the piece to the front of us where the 7-Eleven is. And I don't know, I know that Cindy and Annie run things there, but I do think that everybody contributes. I mean, they own that, so. I was gonna say something else about that. I don't remember what it was. So we are, our role here is we do a lot of little projects, Southwest Riverside County primarily, would like to be a part of the community, and we think we've done, well, we've done everything we've been asked. We did the mitigated negative deck on a property that's less than two acres, and that really was so we would go through all of this, all of the studies and everything on your behalf, and really on behalf of the adjacent residences. So I have learned over the years, the longer I talk, the more questions I put into your heads. So I'm gonna shut up unless you do have questions for me, but as I said, I'm probably just gonna go like this. But we do have some qualified people here to answer all of your questions tonight from an operations and technical standpoint. Thank you again for.
Thank you. What was your first name again?
Mark.
Mark Cooper?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we will go ahead and, let me start on this end. Bob, questions? You have any questions for the applicant? Gary?
Madam Chair, I have no questions for the applicant.
Okay, well, I know Mark does, so I'm gonna go to Mark.
One, two. Yeah, so I had a question about the requirement for all noise-producing equipment, compressors and pumps, and the vacuum producer is a compressor, will be housed within mechanical equipment rooms. And I think my question centered on the proximity of the, I realize that it's probably gonna be in a CMU stucco enclosure. I don't think I saw any elevations, but with a lid on it, but why we couldn't have fit that in the mechanical, in the equipment room?
So as I noted, Don Shively, please.
Very good.
Stuart, these are, they don't need these, do they?
No.
Okay. This is Don Shively with.
Hello, Mr. Shively.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
The answer to that is that we service those quite often throughout the day, and we put them close to the trash receptacles, where we can empty them into the trash containers rather than going from our building, inside our interior of our building, through the parking lot into a dumpster at that point.
Okay, so it was a matter of convenience? Is that safe to say?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Did I understand that right? A Quick Quack without towels?
Well, we, I misunderstood what you were asking. I thought it was paper dispensers. I'm thinking, no, there's no paper dispensers. It's cloth fiber or the fiber cloth. Absolutely, yes, there will be cloth fiber dispensers. So you'll have the dispenser and then the receptacle for it to go into.
Okay, I thought it wouldn't be a Quick Quack without those soft microfiber towels you're famous for. Did, maybe I just didn't understand it. It's a deficit. What are the cue balls?
It's just a fancy design for a trash receptacle. What we find is that everyone's gonna be cleaning out their cars, they're gonna be putting their 44-ounce drink containers, and it's just a trash container right there, so that ball is, if you look down into it, it's a trash can.
Okay, I got confused by that. I wish we could pull up that drawing, because I don't mean to hang up on a small item, but I thought the trash receptacle was a tubular canister that was attached to the vacuum stanchion.
No, no, that's where you're gonna put your towel, your dirty towel.
It's labeled trash receptacle. Yeah.
Yeah, it's the cue ball.
Right. Well, this says trash receptacle, but it's not a cue ball on your material board? I'd like to clarify it. Like, there's a plan view that looks down on the canopy, vacuum canopy area, and it shows a trash receptacle, unless?
I have it, I have the plan's hard copy. I don't have them on as part of the presentation. I can look for it and get you in just a minute.
Okay, and then I'll skip ahead, but I'd like to come back to that, because I see what's, it's probably a minor discrepancy, but I'm seeing what it looks like here is not a round ball object, but it looks like something different. Am I misunderstanding?
I can't see it from there.
Feel free to approach.
I'm so sorry, can you?
So there'll be a couple of those on the lot that aren't driving cars, or they're riding their bikes, that they'll have a receptacle where we can empty that trash from the public.
Okay, very good. We'll come back to it. I'm sure that you're correct on this, and I'm mistaken in my interpretation of that. I mean that. So it's, but we'll let Eric straighten us out, straighten me out. Statement of operations, Dutch Brothers, typical, oh, we talked about that. What are the hours of operation? Are those fully defined for this location for the Dutch Brothers? Is it 5 to 11? Bring them all.
Evening, council, I mean, sorry, planning commissioners. Yes, those will be our hours of operation.
All right, very good. I may have another one for you.
Sure.
And then I think you probably heard me say that I realize nobody's here to speak on it, but I am a little bit concerned about the 9:00 PM closing end of this thing. How did we get to, boy, to 9:00 PM?
That's our company-wide operation hours, 7 to 9. What we find is that people are returning from work, they're going out from, they're going out that evening, either going initially out to dinner, and we find that we still have activity up until 9 o'clock, and then we cut it off at 9 o'clock. It is trickling down from the 8 to 9 o'clock hour. We do, we're expecting approximately 28 to 30 cars an hour, if you were just to average it out. Middle of the day, lunch hour is the busiest time. Saturdays would be the, obviously, the busiest all throughout the day. But what we find is that it'll begin to trickle down, but there's still a need, especially during the summer hours where it's long daylight hours, and they want to do it in the cooler afternoon.
I made a note that I didn't see any of those fabulous water-saving wall-mounted urinals at Dutch Brothers or Quick Quack. I ask because I know Quick Quack makes proud mention of its water-conserving efforts. Wonder why they didn't extend the philosophy to water-conserving urinals? Any plans to put urinals in there?
Well, it's a shared bathroom, and it's not required by code.
Not a code requirement, and I realize, I think I understood it was all gender.
If you'd like us to put a urinal in there, we're happy to do that.
Well, I'm certainly not gonna direct you to do that, but it just seemed like it ran contrary to Quick Quack. It has a great reputation for, in fact, you mentioned it in your statement of operations, how much water you save. And I know you can get like a .6 flush urinal, but I guess, well, truthfully, I ran it by my wife, and she says typically women and all gender, I guess. Is there some proclivity, some reason women don't like to?
It's really nasty to be in there, yeah. Let's not put a urinal in there, please. Thank you.
Oh, that's a thing.
It is a thing.
Yes.
All right. Do you know yet how many blowers and what the horsepower will be of each?
Our blowers are gonna be 12, and the horsepower runs 10, 15. It'll be maxed out at 15.
No 25s?
No.
Okay. Is that this site specific?
No, no, that's company-wide.
It's your policy. Okay. Yeah, I had a question. I was looking in the packet, the mufflers that are on the blowers. What is that? Whose product is that? Is that a VacuTech product?
No, it's a, now you just stumped me, because it is a, Tyler, who do we use on that?
McNeil?
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
I, it goes onto their product, and it's just gonna diminish the decibels on it.
Right, so let me ask you this. Do those mufflers on the blowers, do they restrict or reduce the output of the blowers when they're actively muffling?
Yeah, they work better without those, but the trade-off is that they run at the peak level as opposed to turning down the decibel on it.
Are these, is it a fixed thing, this muffler?
Yeah, it gets bolted on to it, screwed on to it.
But it doesn't travel in and out like a sound?
No, no, no. It's muffling the sound. It's not the air that it's muffling.
Okay. Will the, would the blowers operate if those were disabled or removed for addition, you know, to gain additional blowing? You say they're restricted if they're used.
Yeah, it's an after, yeah, they would operate without them, but in order for, I mean, and they'll fall off, they'll break off, and we have to put them back on. It's not like a governor that would restrict it.
Yeah, I had a question about that with, you know, with the, in the MND, I think it was, talked about condition bio 2, talked about building outside of February 1 to October 30, August 31. And then I see that, I also saw later though, that project construction is anticipated to occur over a period of about 11 months, sounds right, beginning in the first quarter of '25? Did you mean to say '26?
Was that question to me? Say the question one more time.
Says, "Construction is scheduled to begin Q1 '25."
Well, that's, yeah.
It's, well, yeah, but it's, are you thinking '26? Have you made a B and S supplemental yet?
No, no, no. There's been no building permits middle at this point. This was optimistic when we started this project two and a half years ago.
Got you.
That's Eric's fault.
How do you intend to handle, is it probably in line with what everybody else does? Are you gonna pay an in lieu of fee for the public art component?
Yes, that's our plan.
I ask, and it's probably a little premature, but my only real concern with the photometric. I ask, and it's probably a little premature, but my only real concern with the photometrics is, which you can imagine, is those east-adjacent houses, you know, that there's no spill over there, you know, or minimal. But I think, Mr. Jones, you told me as a candle, one?
Yeah, the standard is one-foot candle, and what we've seen in the preliminary report is that whole area adjacent to the residential, it's well below one-foot candle. That'll all be finalized during the building plan check phase.
We'll keep that concern in mind as we're kind of finalizing that plan. And there are things they can do as far as light cutoff to shield lighting from those adjacent uses, but currently, the plan that we just saw submitted to us a couple days ago shows that the lighting is very low in that particular area. We'll just make sure to maintain that low lighting level.
Thank you all, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just, Bob? The, the lighting has to meet the Palomar requirements too, right? Yeah. Yeah, okay.
What was your question, Bob?
Lighting had to meet the Palomar requirements, which are, you know, pretty strict, so.
Right. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Anybody? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay. Since we do not have any public comments and no more questions of the applicant, I'm going to close the public hearing. And now it's time for discussion, unless you have any last-minute questions of staff. Could do that. Okay. Bob, comments? No motions yet, we're just discussing.
First of all, I, the, I did hear some comments related to this project on, in social media today, and it was all very positive, all, excuse me, all very positive. People were looking forward to filling out that, that, that little village with these additional businesses, so. And just also a reminder to all of us that there are already businesses in there that are open to 10 o'clock at night, and I think the gas station's open till quite a bit, quite a bit later. So there's a lot of activity, or I should say, some activity that goes on there, you know, throughout the day and the evening. I was also very pleased with the traffic planning. I, you know, I look a lot at ingress and egress as well as people walking to get a cup of coffee from the parking lot, how safe that is and everything, and I think you guys did a really, really good job with designing that. The other thing is I go to a car wash on Temecula Parkway quite often, and when you get inside of it, it is quite loud. When I get out of it, I don't notice any noise at all. So I usually clean my car for probably a good half hour, 40 minutes afterwards, and don't, just don't notice any, any noise. And I don't know if that's because of the way the construction is done, that the noise levels are kept down, but it wasn't something that I was really concerned about because I just never, never had any noise issues with, with it. And other than that, I think it's a, it's a great project. I hear, you know, Dutch Brothers makes very good coffee, so I'm looking forward to that. And that's, that's it for me.
Gary?
Yeah. The, the use for the spot, for the parcel, looks certainly appropriate from, from my There are, have been no concerns from either at the public meetings that were held with the, for the neighborhood, that would be my primary concern, as well as tonight, I haven't heard from anybody, so I'm hesitant to go out and assume there's, there's problems where there aren't problems. So I think that that's a good sign if you didn't get any negative reaction from the neighbors. That tells me a lot. It's nice that we're going to have a different brand of coffee in town. That's long overdue. Congratulations on that. And my, my compliments to staff for engineering the removal of the cinder blocks and coming up with a much softer, appropriate appearance. And my, my compliments to the project proponent as well for, for softening that up. I think that, that was a big improvement. So those are my comments. I like the project.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. I guess my questions, or my, my concerns boil down to two and perhaps just one. I understand that, you know, the, the convenience factor of putting the, I think that, that vacuum producer, and it has a big collection canister, I assume that the applicant is saying that they're saying they have to empty frequently, but, but I did think that the requirement was for it to be in the mechanical equipment room by code. If I missed that, then, then I'd, I'd want to stand corrected, but if, if this is a variance for convenience, even, even if it were, I don't suppose I would have any objection to it except for the proximity to the, to the bounding neighbors. So that, that's a, that's a concern I have.
Want to ask Eric on that?
Yeah, there's, Building Safety might, might need to chime in, but to my knowledge, there's no requirement that says a car wash vacuum pump needs to be in the equipment room. Randy, is there anything that you're?
It was in the?
No, I, I think they were mentioning that just as a benefit and mitigating factor for the project, that they were putting those pieces of equipment in an equipment room.
It was in the noise impact study at section 6.3. All other noise-producing equipment, compressors, will be housed within a mechanical equipment room. So this seems like a variance from that, because this is really just an enclosure, not a mechanical equipment room. So that I have a little bit of heartburn with. And then I guess the, the other one is the nine PM hour. I, I understand that nobody's here to talk about it, but those, those homes, the ownership of them will change, and, you know, it's, it's my experience, at nine o'clock, residential adjacent is a little late for a car wash. I would suggest a closing time of eight PM. But that's, that's all I had on that.
Okay. All right. Thanks to my colleagues for all your comments and questions. I went out there today, and I don't think I've ever driven through that neighborhood, so that was eye-opening. And, because I had a big concern about changing this to the PDO because, and having instead of 200 feet, 75 feet. And there's a, there's a wall there and has a wood, an extended wood on top of the wall, and I was parked there right where the project would be, and trying to kind of get a feel and if I, if I lived there, what that would be like. And because the projects themselves, I think, are awesome. Like, I don't have any problem with either of those projects. That has just been my only concern. But again, as Gary said, we haven't heard from anybody, and, which surprises me, but we haven't heard from anybody, and it's loud there no matter what. You're right by the freeway. So I don't know that having these two projects there is going to make a huge difference from the noise that's already there as I was sitting there listening to the freeway right there. And, and then as I drove around to the edge where the gas station is and parked right there, the gas station, and I asked Eric about this, is about 50 feet from the homes. It's close. And the 75 feet is close, it's close. There's no doubt about that. But again, and I thought about, well, can we, is there any way we can have them make it 200 feet even though they don't have to, you know, and I know that that's not really realistic. But as I went out there, I think for me, that's what helped me to kind of wrap my head around it, like, I think it's going to be okay. So I'm okay with that. I understand the nine PM. I don't know, it sounded like that's a, those are their standard hours for their companies, so I don't know how that would work, if they would be willing to, to work with that. I, I think that would be great if they could. But other than that, I don't, I don't really have a problem with your other problem. The vacuum problem, I don't have a problem with that, but if hours could be changed, I don't know, and maybe we can bring the applicant back up for that, since we do have a question on that. But I would have to open the public hearing. Would you want to do that?
I'd like to.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing back up and bring our applicant and see if there's anything we can do about hours.
Are we, are we horse-trading at this point? I mean, this is, we're cutting our revenue at this point.
Just asking a question. Are you, are you, would you be willing to do that, or is that something you really can't do?
That's something we can't do on that.
Okay. Okay. That's all we're asking.
Sure.
You know, let's not forget that this is being approved, if it is, under conditional use permit. And so you always have the option to go back and revisit it at the end of the, the time period and redo the conditional use permit. So my best suggestion is leave it the way it is, that's your decision, not mine, and see if it works. And if it doesn't, can always address it later.
Yeah, I think it's a little harder later, but yeah. Okay, that's, is that, that's all I wanted to know, if that was something.
I understand the answer.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and unless we have any other comments or discussion, I will ask for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion as presented by staff with no changes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carried. Forward zero. All right. Thank you, and congratulations. And, oh, I forgot to say about Dutch Brothers. Started in Oregon, I have a son in Oregon. I'd never been to Dutch Brothers till I was there, and there's three in a tiny little town of Clamath Falls.
Yeah, we're coming. I do have three more shorts planned for Temecula. I live in Canyon Hills. Eric's actually my neighbor, so we're excited to be here. We do have that one store that's opening at Lake Elsinore, so if you aren't familiar with it.
Oh, cool, yeah, and I've had people already so excited about Dutch Brothers. Great hot chocolate.
Like I said, when I came here, I'm like, oh, they're not going to have any questions for me. So, so we're excited to be here, so thank you very much.
Thank you for coming from Arizona.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right. Thanks, you guys. All right. Here we go. All right, Commissioner reports. Mark? No? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Gary?
Yeah. My compliments to code enforcement. As you know, I spend a lot of time on the streets of Temecula, and one of the pet peeves are the, the shopping carts, right? Or other homes, I guess, for some people. But anyhow, I've seen improvement. Most of the companies are doing it, or they're transitioning into it. I know there's still some that are using their old ones, but tell code enforcement doing good, keep it up, and let's get those things out of the creeks and everywhere else where they're cluttering up the town. Thank you.
Bob?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. I don't think I have anything either. Commission subcommittee reports. Anybody? Did you make it to your subcommittee? That's awesome.
Yeah, Commissioner Watson showed up tonight, as a matter of fact. Yeah, I was. I attended tonight an informative code cleanup with Matt Peters and Katie, and I think Mark was there as well. And so, yes, I did, I, I did make, do my makeup. Thank you for asking.
Okay, good. Did you want to make any comments on that? Was it the two of you?
I was, I went to the original meeting. So that was just a makeup.
That was his special meeting. Okay. Wow.
I didn't want to have to say that.
Okay, we got it. All right. So, okay, Matt, you're up.
It was good practice for Katie to go through that a second time. So two announcements tonight. The first is with regard to the packets. We're going to be going all digital. There was a push a while back to go to digital plans for all the commissions, and then we kind of got away from that, and we're, we're bringing that back. So as a matter of efficiency for the admin team, and I guess for the city, all the plans are going to be digital. So we'll get that out to you ahead of time, as, as we have in the past, but we won't be printing the packets.
Ahead of the time, you mean Thursday?
Yeah.
Before the meeting?
Yep.
But not ahead of Thursday? Right?
Right.
Some of us may not have the tech, the technology to adequately address this digital something like this. Is it going to come with some sort of support from a technology standpoint, i.e. a computer?
Good question.
I don't know about the ability to provide a computer, but I do think we can make ourselves available if you need to come in, if you need something more than the staff report, we can work with you on that. Do you have a tablet or anything?
Well, I, I have a computer. I know how to use a computer, but I may have an old computer that may not be up to speed with this. You know, I, I would just bring that up as a, as a suggestion. It seems like it's a pretty reasonable expense if we're going to be expected to, as opposed to driving down, creating more traffic, that type of thing. I would recommend that you consider it. If we're going to have to look at something like this, we should be able to do it properly. That's just my, my feeling. I don't know how my colleagues feel.
Yeah, I don't. I have an old computer too, so I have a feeling, Stu knows this, every time he tries to send me something, it, it regurgitates it. So, yeah, and you and I have already talked about this. This is, this is a hard thing for me, just because that's how I kind of work, but I understand too. So hopefully, there's a way that we can figure this out, so that it, you know, that we can be able to do our job the way we need to.
Well, we'll work through it.
Okay.
I'll take it into consideration. If they are larger projects, maybe there's something we can do. If they're smaller projects, we'll try to do just the digital. My second announcement is related to?
But I do, I do like that Gary brought that up. I hadn't even thought about that because, I mean, I, you know, if that's what they're asking us to do, right, and not, I don't think I can get it on my computer, everything that way. And we're not buying a new computer anytime soon, because we have to buy a new car. Okay. Anyway.
All right, I'll, I'll.
There's always the option like the old days when you guys drop these off at our, there's always the option like the old days when you sent these on a courier to deliver them to our houses. So maybe that's a cheaper way to do it. But anyhow, I think we have a valid concern there, Matt, and I appreciate it if you, you would give it serious consideration to help us do our job better.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Thanks, Matt.
My other announcement is on Tuesday, the 22nd, so next week's city council meeting, one of the agenda items is for the city council to consider boards, commissions, and committees and receive general direction regarding the same. So there will be a discussion at the city council level regarding the commissions, boards, and committees. So I would encourage you to watch that meeting or perhaps attend the meeting.
I, I would also add, if you have some concerns, to contact a city council member that you feel comfortable with and share your concerns, because I think if they don't hear from us, they don't know how we're feeling about it. And it's already been discussed, some points of it, you know, a couple months ago. And so, and Zach said to me, I haven't heard from any commissioners, how do you feel about it? You know, so I was able to talk to him. So if there's someone that you feel comfortable talking to, I would suggest that you do that, for sure.
Just one point on that, Lynne. It would help to know what, you know, what is spurring the discussion, where is discussion heading, what is being considered? Just that they're considering the commissions, to me, doesn't give me a whole lot of direction as to what, what's going to happen. Are they going to expand them, are they going to combine them, that type of thing? How does it affect us?
Yeah, I can't, I can't say what they're going to do, but I do know part of the discussion is just to evaluate the need of the various commissions. I, I know the city clerk has looked at neighboring cities, what commissions they have, and that's going to be part of the discussion. In addition, what they've talked about is perhaps merging some of the commissions. So I don't think it's any secret that there's an idea out there to merge traffic safety with planning commission. So I think that'll be certainly part of the discussion next Tuesday.
Is it part of the discussion term limits?
Yes, that is also part of the discussion. Yes, that is also part of the discussion. So, the, so my, my point is, if you have strong feelings about anything, I think you should contact a city council member before the meeting. Anything else from our Matt man? Nothing? Okay. All right. Public Works Ron, it's so good to have you back.
Thank you.
We've missed you.
I did go to California League of Cities, Public Works Officers Institute, so that was good, so, sorry.
Did you learn a lot?
Yes, I did, and there was quite a bit of good information there, so...
Good.
I am back. Um, so me and Valerie will be here for the next foreseeable future.
Good.
Um, but the main thing probably I wanted to talk about was the, you know, our French Valley project. That's been ongoing. It's been a great project. It has gone on schedule, on budget. We're very proud of it, uh, but two things on that. Number one, um, there are going to be some nighttime closures next week. It won't be daytime, so it'll be late at night, and then the big closure is the twenty-fifth, April twenty-fifth. It'll close at eleven PM. It'll be closed for fifty-five hours, but at the end of those fifty-five hours, it's going to open in its ultimate configuration. That means the flyover will be active, the CD lanes will be, the collector-distributor lanes will be active. Everything will be in its final configuration after the twenty-ninth. There is a ribbon cutting, uh, in June, and I'll keep you guys informed of that, June sixteenth, about timeframe, and that's because we need to coordinate with, uh, Congressman Calvert and ISA and everybody to have them here, you know, because they were a big part of this, so...
Right.
Anyway, I wanna make sure the twenty-fifth starts the closure.
I do have a question on that. So, it starts at eleven PM. What exactly is gonna be closed?
What is going to be closed?
Yes.
The Winchester northbound onramps.
Okay, so adjust that. The Winchester northbound onramps completely closed.
Yes.
But the freeways open, it's just that on-ramp?
Yeah, the freeways.
Winchester. Okay, 'cause I got people already asking. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm glad it's not Easter weekend. Good job.
Wait, no, we waited till, it's af- after Easter, but next week does have some nighttime closures.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Ron?
Yeah. Um, do you have any projections for Nicholas when the detour will be down?
So, the detour will go away at the end of this month, so by May first, about the first week of May, they're looking at getting the traffic back on the old alignment, how it used to curve.
Oh, okay.
And be, you know, now that's not the final alignment, because Nicholas goes through, but this detour on Medusa's been in place too long.
Right.
And so we need it to go away, so we've got them working on getting it back on this old alignment temporarily.
Okay.
And so then, um, the ultimate Nicholas hoping for before the end of the year. I'm projecting October, but it'd be, but it'd be nice before the end of the year.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, then we will adjourn until Wednesday, May seventh, at six PM, right here. Thank you. Thanks, staff. You guys are awesome. Good job.